All right, well, call me to order with the roll call.
Aye.
Here.
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Gargano?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Friends?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Knudsen?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council received information on unagenda topics brought before the council members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of this meeting. Is there anyone on agenda which should be heard? We will go to consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. Number one is approve minutes for the meeting held on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Number two, approve or deny January two thousand and twenty-three paid bills. Three, receive January two thousand and twenty-three building permit report. Number four, approve or deny application for cigarette and tobacco products retail license for Smoke World Vape LLC, DBA Smoke World Reesburg, twenty-two fifty-five East Main Street. And number five, approve or deny application for cigarette and tobacco products retail license for SSS Wisconsin, BRW LLC, DBA SQRL Service Station, number seven zero eight, three oh six East Main Street, formerly Sunix Service Station.
It's called squirrel service station.
Squirrel.
SQRL.
Any questions on the consent, or I will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by Stevenson. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General business. Item one is approved and I resolution forty-five zero four dash twenty-three, authorizing issuance of up to one million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and zero and eight cents on taxable communications utility system revenue bond to evidence reimbursement obligation with respect to letter of credit. Brett Shutter, how are you tonight?
Good, yourself?
Good.
So, I guess, most of you, I guess, Sonny, I don't know you, but I'm Brett Shutter, gentleman manager of Reesburg Utility. Supposedly you've heard this before, but if you look at the map there, that's our construction project we got going out for the fiber optics. Green is already completed and in service, and then any of the colored areas are additional construction areas. We have received quite a bit of funding for these projects through multiple sources. One of them is called their Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, ARDOF, you might have heard it as, through the FCC. And then also, we've received multiple PSC broadband grants totaling over like fourteen million dollars worth for that. The ARDOF funding is another six point four million, yeah, six point four million dollars over ten years, so we get six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year for that. One of the requirements for the ARDOF funding is a letter of credit we have to have on file with the federal government until we get this project completed. We have six years to complete the project, and then each year, the letter of credit is a varying amount of our annual support. So the first year, we had to have a letter of credit in the amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand. This year, we gotta have it in nine hundred and forty-three thousand or something like that. And then they're all kind of laid out in your packet there. It varies by year. And the maximum amount is on year twenty-twenty-five, where we gotta have that one point nine three million dollar letter of credit. We're getting the letter of credit through Community First Bank, and there's obviously a fee associated with the letter of credit. This bond is basically our collateral for that letter of credit that Community First Bank would hold. It would only get drawn on if, for some reason, we were in default and that letter of credit got drawn on. So Tom had asked about the eighteen percent interest. That's just the interest rate that they threw in there. We don't pay that interest unless that letter of credit got drawn on, and then Community First Bank would draw on the bond. But if that ever happened, then obviously we'd refinance and get a better interest rate than eighteen percent on that. And just for reference, one of the requirements in the construction is by the end of year three, we have to have forty percent of that project completed. After one year, we're already at twenty-four percent. So I'm not really too concerned about the meeting, meeting our timelines. We can actually, next year, reduce requests to the federal government and reduce our letter of credit down to, back down to one-year support because we've already hit twenty percent this year. So by the end of next, this upcoming construction season, we should be well over fifty percent of that project completed. So I guess I'll take any questions or explain anymore on this. I can definitely dig into it.
Any questions for Brett?
And I guess we worded this one, if you remember last year, we just addressed the letter of credit last year. This year, we worked with Corals and Brady, and we're addressing it for every year that we have to have this letter of credit. So you won't have to see me next year.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
At last, at your area, you indicated that there was some supply chain difficulties, but it wasn't going to hold you up. You didn't feel, is that still the case?
It's still a challenge, very much so, and project costs are extremely high. When we applied for that ARDOF funding, it was about just over a thirty million dollar project. Our most recent estimate was one forty-three million dollars for that same project. So basically, all the PSC, the fourteen million dollars grant, yeah, there's just covering inflation anymore. It's, yeah, it's, supply chain is still a challenge. We're managing it. We actually have all, pretty much all of our materials we need for this upcoming year.
Wonderful. Good. Any other questions?
Just for clarification, is a revenue bond does not adversely affect the city's debt ceiling and or our ability to borrow?
It is a taxable one, too, so we can come against that.
Anything further? Take the motion, ones and order.
So moved.
Motion by Rochewing?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Take a roll call in here today.
Aye.
Aye.
Rochewing?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Gargano?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Bye.
Stevenson.
All right.
Bye, bye. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. All right, number two for General Business is going to be struck from the agenda that will come in a later meeting. Salute to number three is approved and I first reading and set up public hearing for March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for ordinance nineteen fifty-three dash twenty-three, amending sections of chapter three forty-nine intoxicating liquor and fermented beverages in the city code. Chief, how you doing tonight?
That's right, thank you. Reason for the amendment would be to clean up and clarify some of the language that's in the ordinance, specifically three forty-nine dash fourteen. Max reviewed the ordinance and language and read the suggestions they could have in front of you for this. Take any questions if you have.
Questions for the chief or Matt, anything you want to add?
No, it's just a language issue that the chief had brought up, so we tried to clarify the ordinance so that it's easier to enforce in the event that there's any violations.
Any questions? Phil.
So was this just a unique thing that didn't get caught when we did the ordinance redo, the codification?
Yeah, I think what happened was we weren't having a lot of issues with people walking out the back door into a parking lot. I think that's what this is kind of addressing.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
It's taking bits and pieces, like Sub C would be struck and combined, so it's just taking pieces, I think, together and then making sure that, because if you like, Sub C, it's saying we're in a public place or open to a public place and just, it's just.
Okay, because this is the first time that we've had to do this ourselves since the recodification, correct?
Yeah, this would, this would be something that we'd have to do ourselves because it's pretty, it's specific.
Unique.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll take the motion to set public hearing.
I've moved you set the public hearing for.
March fifteen.
Yeah.
Motion by Peterson to set public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Knudsen. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have that on March thirteenth. Recommendations from board screens and commissions. We have public works approved and I authorize the city engineer to accept the public bid for Laurel Street reconstruction and County Road H water tower drainage improvements.
Steve isn't here. Steve took a trip to Baltimore.
Yeah, he did. He went and looked at some equipment.
So maybe I'll, David, you could fill us in?
Yes, I will try, because bids were opened and we have a good, good idea. And I guess we know where we're at. As it says, we're asking that Steve be authorized to accept the bids for Laurel Street construction and County H water tower drainage, which is a separate project that is part of the utility, but we are in partnership with, and those bids came in where we expected or even a little lower than. So the recommendation of public works was, was to approve.
Any questions for Dave? What's on the form of motion, Dave?
I will make it in the form of a motion to approve.
Motion by Knudsen?
Second.
Seconded by Stevenson. Is there any other questions? All right, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Ministry reports, economic update. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. So at the end of January, Kurt Luca and I were requested to make a presentation at the Salt County Economic Development Committee. And when we did that, I thought, we put together a PowerPoint presentation. And when you take all the projects that we have, that we talked about, I thought, this is really a really nice list of things that we're doing. So maybe you guys would like to take a look at this, and I'll give you an opportunity as kind of, I don't, I don't want to give you the whole presentation because you've been here for all of it, but I would like to kind of just go through slide by slide quickly and see if you have any questions or concerns or any comments about the projects as they're going on. It's just nice to have a place where it's all together, because a lot of times you'll see these things, bits and pieces, as it kind of filter through meetings and not realize just how well we're doing. And not a lot of communities can say that, and I think that was, there was a point that was driven home even at that committee presentation, so. Talks about the Hollyett Express. If you've been up there, you see they, I don't build hotels, so I guess I don't know, but they've got the columns for the entryway there. That was a priority, get those in first. That's just how they do it stuff, but the slab is there, the utilities are in. The East Side Business Park expansion, that's currently getting ready to go out to bid for the EPA project. Once we sign our contract and accept the bids, then we can start doing development agreements with companies that are interested in going out there. And right now, there are three. DRM Electrico, I don't know if you guys remember that, Plan Commission probably does, but they doubled their capacity over there. Supodo Cheese, we know about that. We're just finishing up on the developer's agreement with that. That should be signed within the next week or so. And then the West Side Commercial Building, if you've been over there, that is by far our fastest project. That has walls up already, waiting to put the roof on there. And he's got, I want to say, two or three of those already spoken for. Still won't tell me what they are. We went, so our RICDC, we're hosting these breakfast meetings, breakfast, business breakfast meetings. And one of the things that came out of there was a need for childcare and some, some, somewhere just to address childcare. So we created an ad hoc committee for childcare initiative, and we've met probably three times now. And we're starting to get a really good handle on what's needed. We sent out a survey to businesses. We actually wrote the survey for businesses to send to their employees to make sure that the businesses were aware of the childcare needs that they may have in-house. And then part of that will be an effort to partner with those businesses to help subsidize the daycare that we, that we currently need. So we have another breakfast meetings coming up at Madison College on the twenty-third of March. So we're in the process of getting that all planned up. And what we'll do is we'll kind of go around, we went RMC and then the high school and then Madison College, and we give those guys an opportunity to talk about themselves a little bit, as long as they're going to be hosting the breakfast at their facility. They have kind of a Q and A, there's a city update, and then we have breakfast, and then they usually take a tour of the facility that they're visiting, so. Works out really nice. Rail usage, I know that's been a priority to make sure that the rail stays viable in town. As you can see, it's increasing like crazy, and Riffy has signed another contract that's going to double what he brings in per week. So he's going to keep that very busy over there. Matter of fact, he's, he's going to come to plan with some more advanced plans than what he had thought he was going to need to begin with. Then Hanky's obviously still doing what they're doing. That's building three. That's not building three, but it is building three. So building three got approved by the state for Huntington Park. And we talked a little bit about our housing. We added a hundred new housing units over the past three years. Those are including our apartment buildings. We've got a really nice blend. We are heavy on multifamily, and based on what we hear, that's where we're supposed to be. And again, we still have between two hundred and fifty and three hundred full-time jobs that are available in the city, and that average wage is eighteen to twenty-five dollars an hour. We talked a little bit about our population growth. Again, if you remember, we said this before, but we're basically responsible for thirty-four percent of Salt County's growth, just our city alone. So because of that, a lot of our family, our single-family lots are getting eaten up. There's sixty-six of those left. Those aren't sixty-six that are like available, available. A lot of those have been sold and purchased, and they're going to be used in the near future. We do need to talk about an updated housing study. Last one we did was two thousand and eighteen. Unfortunately, Salt County is not interested in partnering with us with that. They're not interested to talk about housing at all. They want to leave that up to the individual municipalities to take care of. I highlighted our school district partnership, the tech ed house flip that we did, the Vine Street one you know about, Eagle Street flip, we're going to close on this week. I think we have, I want to say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that project combined between us and the school district, and we're selling for a hundred and eighty thousand. Listen for one seventy-nine-nine. We got one eighty out of it, so twice. Salt School Rehab, that's currently going on. I encourage you guys to take a step over there and see what Dan's doing. Those apartments are amazing, one, two, and three-bedroom. Our gym, we're right now, we're, we have the floor down, and we are framing the bathroom, the bathroom is right now in the hallway. That's really our last step. We're going to do, put some electronic door locks on there, and then we'll be done. Hopefully, we'll have people in there using it in March, if all goes well. Parkside Village, that's the senior, the fifty-five and older development adjacent to Nishon Park. That's, I think, a hundred and eighty, something like that. So we're very close to getting that one signed for a developer's agreement. So you should be seeing that come across probably, they wanted to get it to this meeting, but our numbers didn't come out fast enough for them. So I suspect it'll be the second meeting in February that will tell you who that developer is and what they plan on doing. Suffice it to say, we're going to move things around a little bit. There was some, a little bit of static that we caught from, from Plan Commission and from some comments about where we're going to place things. So we're going to move some buildings around like that just to make sure that we are cognizant of the concerns of the neighbors. But yeah, that's going to be coming here. And again, if you remember, that's thirty-five million dollar development. To some of our Call of Life stuff, as you know, the past three years, we've probably done five parks with six and seven coming online next year. We did apply for the Vibrant Spaces grant for the farmer's market, the old theater site. The splash pad was completed last year, and our All Abilities Park, we have that ready to go. I think we're going to break ground in April or May on that one to get that one done. And again, that one's totally supported by donations. The Field House, if you're out in that area, you saw we moved a lot of dirt today, so we got into the ground. We had our, I think it was our pre-construction, pre-construction meeting. There's another one next week, but we're going to just leave. Say hi to everybody. But yeah, so that's going well. We will be applying for an early start for the metal portion of the building. The way the developer, our contractor wants to do it is get everything graded, metal building, which is going to take him the longest to do. And then once he's completed in there, pour the pad for the fabric structure, and once the fabric gets on site, that's two days to put up. So that's kind of the direction he wants to go. And then there's the Vibrant Public Space Grant that we applied for. We don't know if we've gotten that yet, but we have applied for it. We seem like a really good fit for that. Regardless, we do have a donor that's interested in supporting us on that project as well. So if we don't get the grant, we'll still be able to fall back on that donor and then park impact fees to help finish it off. That's where we bragged about the utility for a little while. Is it still there?
Yeah.
So we bragged about the utility for a couple minutes there. We talked about the wastewater treatment plant, hopefully breaking ground on that in two thousand and twenty-four, treating water by two thousand and twenty-six. And then we talked about Viking Drive going to the south and having that entrance into the industrial park. And a little bit more about the expansion to the east for our business park. And then we just talked about the comp plan. I think that's the last slide, Jake. Yeah, so I guess this is your opportunity to ask questions about the projects that we have. I know that normally we do a lot of our stuff in closed session, but this is your chance to have it on the agenda and out in the open so we can ask any questions that you may have or not have. That's fine.
Just one word, wow.
Yeah.
You can found all together.
It's all together like that. It's, it seems like a lot.
We have a lot to brag about, for sure. A lot of work by this council. Any questions?
I can ask a quick question online. What's the timeline on the fifty-five and older?
So we had originally thought that would be a phased project, so phase one and two. Our developer is not interested in phasing it. He says he wants to get in there, pull up the trailer, and work until it's done. So he thinks two years it will be completed.
That's amazing. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
With DRM's expansion, are they going to the new part of the industrial park or they?
They, they expanded on-site, and they're already done.
Oh, they're done.
Yeah, so they doubled the size of their current facility, but that does electro coat, and there's still a powder coat business that they'd like to do, which I'm like, at the spot, ready for you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Tim, thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome idea. Commission, committee, board, staff reports, historic preservation.
We met tonight. We talked about new projects and then procedures for grants.
Very good. Library Board?
Library Board met last Thursday. We arranged the weather not to be bad so we could continue our meeting. I hope you all appreciate that. We had a rather brief meeting, but we did approve the two thousand and twenty-two director's report, the state of the library, and Sue Ann is going to be finishing that up as we speak because she was off having surgery. She will remain off for the next couple of weeks, but she will be doing a lot of work from home. Other than that, there's going to be one additional staff retirement later in February, and we're just going to be reallocating those hours to other staff members and kind of realigning in the hopes that we can, we can deal with the existing staff rather than bringing on one more individual. That's the state of the library for this month.
Thanks so much, Mike. I can't help but notice the green leaves in the tree behind you in the window.
They're plastic, Dave. They're plastic.
Any other committee, commissioner, board, or staff member, anything they want to report?
Your honor.
Yes.
Public Works. Public Works had a meeting out of the normal this last month. We addressed the Laurel Street project. We did have some other bids that came aboard, but we found a glitch in the posting process, so we've had to go back and reopen that and redo that process, so that'll be forthcoming. As Tim mentioned, or you mentioned, Steve isn't here this evening. He's in Baltimore, Maryland, or outside because we've got a group of people there looking at equipment that will most likely or possibly be part of the new sewage plant. There's very few of them across North America, new technology and requirements by the EPA and.
With a price tag of like six million dollars.
Correct, and with that kind of a price tag, we've thought.
We want to look at it.
We wanted to go and see it in operation, so we've got guys out there doing that. And the last bit of news is that, for Tim, and sorry, but we are changing our time again to accommodate a number of committees, so we will, in the, starting.
The next meeting?
Next.
Yep.
Next week.
Wednesday.
We will be meeting at five-thirty here in City Hall.
Yes.
What Dave is, Dave is too polite to say is that it was the newspaper. We made arrangements for our official newspaper to publish our advertising for bid, and they forgot twice in a row.
Well, that was the glitch.
So this is, this is the second time this has happened to us, so we do select that official newspaper every April, so maybe keep that in mind next time we do that.
That's, that's unfortunate, especially when you talk about timelines.
Right.
That's for sure. All right, anything else? Officer the Mayor, just want to touch base and thank everyone that had anything to do with and contributed either by helping out at the auction or donating or bidding.
Was running up the bid.
We're running up the bid. I would thank Phil personally for filling in for me that night. It was a real quick meeting, I understand that, but thank you for running the meeting that night on Monday. It was a whirlwind week, but while worth all the time and effort, we raised like just over sixty-one thousand dollars in that amount of time for all nonprofits that the United Fund helps out. So that sets the bar pretty, the bar pretty high for next year, but we look forward to the challenge, so. Thanks, everyone, that had anything to do with it, so. With that, I have nothing else. We'll go around the horseshoe. Tom?
Nothing tonight.
Dave Knudsen?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Phil Peterson?
Nothing new, but with the anticipation and excitement of the last meeting, I did forget to ask our friend, virtual Mike Gargano, if he had anything to comment on. We went around the horseshoe, so I surpassed him, passed him over last time, so.
I'll make sure I ask him twice.
Good, good. I appreciate that.
Missy Friends?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Adam Kenny?
Nothing tonight.
City Attorney Matt?
Neither for me.
Jake from City Hall.
Just a reminder, next Tuesday is the spring primary election. There's one office on the ballot at Supreme Court. If you did request an absentee ballot, we're asking that everyone get them out back by tomorrow just to make sure we get them in time. If you want to vote in person, you could do that every day this week from seven, three to four. On Friday, you could vote until five, and on Monday, we're closed for all voting activities, so you'll have to vote on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work with that stuff. Tim Becker?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mike Gargano, anything from the last meeting?
No, nothing from the last meeting, but this week, Mr. Mayor, since I won't be seeing you tomorrow night at plan, I just wanted to wish you an early happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, you know what? I really like that, Mike. I appreciate that. You are, you're my, my Valentine here at the end of the last year, but you're late to our date. Jason Schulte?
Nothing tonight.
Craig Rochewing?
Nothing tonight.
Sonny, hi.
No, just appreciation to Tim for the presentation I made into the agenda, and it's really exciting to see all the pieces and kind of one big picture is awesome, so.
Yeah, it's like, the word I can with is wow. I mean, we definitely have a lot going on, so. I guess the sunrise of that is enjoy the dirt being moved here this spring. So must be a lot going on. With that, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by, hi.
Second.
Second to Rochewing. All favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Mike, what's the temperature over there?
Mike, what's the temperature over there?
It was seventy on the weekend. Today was fifty and breezy.
Very pleasant.
Yeah.
Winter.
You're having a nice weather week, too, I understand.
It's, it's like forty-eight?
Not too bad. Yeah.